Let me call back.
Yeah, no, I don't see you, Monica.
Hello. Are you on your phone?
Yes, I'm on my phone.
Monica, just put a stick over your face, that's fine. We're gonna get going.
Mayor, all meetings live.
Alrighty, thank you very much. Okay, at this point, I'd like to open up the Baldwin Park special virtual meeting. Today is July the 5th, 2020, and the time is 5:05. At this point, I will go ahead and ask everyone to pre-praise. We're gonna pledge allegiance to the flag. With your right hand over your heart, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America.
The United States of America.
One nation, with God.
Thank you, thank you. At this point, I want to let everyone know that the city clerk is sitting next to me, and at this point, she'll take roll call.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Alejandra Avila.
Here.
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Mayor Procham Warren Hernandez.
President.
And Mayor Manuel Lozano.
President. Thank you. Welcome, Monica. Oh, thank you very much. At this point, I will... We received any communication, so I'm opening up the communication at this time.
Uh, no, not for this meeting.
Right. She's indicated to me that she did not receive any public communication letters and/or calls. So at this point, I will go ahead and close the public communication. At this point, I will now go over to the open session, which has the state audit presentation. Is that Rose Tam or John Chan?
Mayor, I'll go ahead and give the presentation. We'll have Rose Tam here and Sam Gutierrez, in case there's any questions. Some of the projects included some of the Public Works projects. So yeah, if we could put the PowerPoint up, then we'll go ahead and get started. So on July 16th, the State Controller's Office notified the city that we would be audited. The letter said the following: increasing operating deficits, deficit fund balances reported in the city's financial statements, expenditures in excess of what was budgeted, and lack of physical inventory of capital assets. That was the introduction letter. It's kind of interesting, because the city's general fund reserve had been increasing consistently over the last five years from about $5 million to $9 million. So we were not operating in a deficit. And in addition, the physical inventory issue had already been resolved. It had been mentioned by a previous city auditor, and the policy was already in place. I should note here, we do get audited every year by an independent auditor, and from time to time, by other agencies regarding gas tax and those type of things. So, the four items in the initial letter, Finance Director Rose Tam was able to answer those within the first week that we got the letter. However, the audit went ahead and proceeded. Staff cooperated 100% with the auditors, giving them everything they needed, answering all their questions. I should note that many of the recommendations from the report, some had already been implemented before they even came down to do the audit, and many others have already been implemented since the completion of the audit. In fact, there were some new finance policies the city council adopted at one of the last meetings that helped complete that. So, the evaluation was to be of the city's internal control system, and was focusing on the years 2016, '17, and 2017, '18. So it's some time ago, and as most of you know, the council's changed since then. Some of you weren't on the council. There's at least three. There's about, there's at least three members who were on at the time who are no longer on the city council. So in March 2020, the city was sent a draft report of the audit, given 10 days to respond. That was right about the time that the stay-at-home order was issued, and we closed City Hall. So the State Controller's Office, they were very gracious in extending our deadline to reply. So, I'm gonna talk about the findings. You know, when we talk about an audit, there's very specific meanings to the word "finding", and usually, in a formal audit, we're told whether the finding is for non-conformance, or whether it's just an observation, or whether it's just merely an opportunity for improvement. We had asked to be informed of this, but their process just basically told everything, you know, basically labels everything as a finding. So we'll just get on to the first finding. According to the State Controller's Office, was a project where there were expenditures of over $500,000. This was an engineering project that was discontinued. This was for the Civic Center Park across the street from City Hall. So, you know, we concur, this project was done. We went through the proper process, we retained a landscape architect who prepared plans and specs for a park in the downtown. We still have those plans, we still have plans for shovel-ready projects should the city ever want to get up again. At the time, and probably even more so now, the city didn't have funds to construct or maintain the park. I think, you know, it was hoped that we could come up with grants to do that. In the meantime, new direction was provided by the city council for, to look at an affordable housing project for that process, for that parcel. As you know, there's a shortage of affordable housing in California, and it's a goal of the state imposing that on cities that we build more affordable housing. So currently, we're in an ENA for 150 units of affordable housing on that property. Depending on negotiations, if the city sells the property, we could recruit $1.6 million to the land sale. In addition, the developer would implement and include open space or payment of park funds. I should mention that the funding that was spent for the preparation of plans was park dedication fee, it's the Wimby Fund. Those can only be used for development of parks, those can't be used to pay for, you know, employee benefits or payroll. So, we're in the process of doing the ENA for the affordable housing, you know, for some reason it doesn't go through, which sometimes happens with projects. We still have shovel-ready plans should the city decide to build a park in the future. So we believe this was really a governmental body decision. We believe that the council did discuss this item numerous times, it's not really related to internal controls of the city. So at this point, really no further action or follow-up required for that item. I'll keep going through these, feel free to stop me anytime if you have a question on one of the findings.
Shannon, before you continue, I don't mean to interrupt you, but before you move on from this item, to the last point that you made, I think it's important to provide a little bit more context, and thank you for sharing what you have. The, uh... The context that I wanted to provide was back in 2008, I was elected to the city council in 2007. As early as 2008, I was driving around with affordable housing developers, showing them the city properties that existed, because CRA was being threatened at that time. And it soon went away, and we were trying to look at how to incentivize, you know, development of affordable housing specifically, when we didn't have the resources that Community Redevelopment Agency afforded us. And so, beginning as early as 2008, you know, we were making the effort to look at some of these sites, or opportunity sites for the city, and also to revitalize our downtown area. In 2013, councilmembers Susan Rubio, Cruz Baca, and Ricardo Pacheco decided to entertain the idea of proposing a park at the site, the specific site behind, well, across from City Hall, behind the downtown businesses. We had a thorough conversation, we had many conversations around this topic, and in fact, I expressed concern that we had a main park just across the street at Morgan Park, and, you know, we could use this site for development purposes, to revitalize our downtown, to bring in revenues, and to create, you know, disposable income for our businesses in the downtown area. So, the political will, the three councilmembers led the effort to pursue a park. Then it was realized that the park was gonna cost $3 million. It was gonna cost, you know, where we were gonna get that funding, we'd have to either look at our city funds or look at grant funds. And so, at that time, I think councilmember Ricardo Pacheco decided to change his position and worked with the mayor and I to move forward with the original plan, which was revitalizing our downtown area with affordable housing, with housing. And I know that councilmembers Susan Rubio and Cruz Baca really were, they took issue with that change of a direction, but we, really, in reality, we were going back to what was considered for many years prior to 2013. And we went back to, um... Oh, I was, I'm corrected, the total amount of that park would have cost us $6 million. I was thinking $3 million. Bottom line is, we would have had to look for the funding, either internally or through grants, and, um... So we didn't have the funds, we didn't have the funds, and there was, there was opportunity to generate revenues, and so that was a political decision, it was the council decision. And I just wanna share the context of that, because there was no misuse necessarily, it was just, in 2013, there was a change of direction from three councilmembers who wanted to build a park, and then that, those plans did not go through, they fell through. Those councilmembers are no longer on the council, and so, you know, again, this report, this audit, was, it looked at the timeframe of 2016 to 2018. At that time, there were the mayor, obviously, Manuel Lozano, councilmembers, Susan Rubio, Cruz Baca, Ricardo Pacheco, and myself. So, just a little bit more context, I think it is important to share, those are facts, you can look at the agenda, you can look at the minutes, you can look at the agendas, and you can see for yourself who led the direction of using these funds, $500,000, to look or to consider a park, and we simply just did not have the funding for it, that's all.
Shannon, if I may, really quick?
Sure.
So, I remember when you guys were going through this process, and I actually have the minutes, it was October 15th of 2014, when the project was brought up, it was actually item six, it's to authorize the Civic Plaza, and at that time, we had a unanimous vote to approve that project, it was Baca, Garcia, Lozano, and Rubio. So it was approved on October 15th, 2014 unanimously, then on January 21st, 2015, they had to revise, they had to amend the contract or the agreement, and at that time, Lozano, Baca, Rubio, and Pacheco voted yes, Ms. Garcia abstained from voting. And then on February 17th, 2016, it's with the new consideration for the exclusive negotiation with MJW came up, and at that time, Garcia, Lozano, and Pacheco were the ones that approved it, with Baca and Rubio saying no. So, just to clear the record, everybody was on board at the beginning of the project, and it's in the minutes of October 15th, 2014, January 21st, 2015, everybody except Ms. Garcia, which she abstained, and then on the 17th of February 2016, it was when they approved to consider MJW Investments LLC for the housing project. I just wanted to make sure you had that information. Thank you.
And thank you for that, thank you for that information, Councilmember Avila. If you look at the minutes prior to, there was, there were multiple conversations around that project, and I even cited, I'd have to go back and look at the minutes like you have, but I even cited where we had parks, where we needed park space, and that was a conversation that was going on for, um... It was, it was longer than just one council meeting. I'd have to go back and look at that information, but I think what your information highlights is that, yes, I did abstain, because I was not in support of, um... I always had the vision of looking at a revitalized downtown, even beginning as a planning commissioner. And if you looked at the public record of years, you know, back, you would see that that has always been the case. Like I said, I was on the city council, it was councilmembers Susan Rubio, Cruz Baca, and Ricardo Pacheco who led the effort to move in the direction of this, of this park. And I certainly voiced my concerns, but at a certain point, you know, if the support is there, you move with the support. Now, did I express my concerns? Absolutely, and I think you've highlighted that, you know, by highlighting my abstention. So, you know, there is enough, where there's opportunity to work together, I'm all for it, but you can still express your concerns about projects, and I think if you look at the minutes, not just in October, but in months leading up, you will see that, and staff and others will be witness, that that was a concern. We were, the LA County had just issued, excuse me, LA County had issued at the time a report of the parkport areas of our city, and I repeatedly said, that was not one of the areas. There were other areas in the northeast, there were other areas in the eastern part of our city that were parkport. The site that was proposed was not an area that was designated as parkport. Why? Because we had Morgan Park directly across the street. So if we really look back at the minutes, and, you know, if I have to do that homework, then I will, but if we really look back at the minutes, you'll see that there was an ongoing conversation, and it's very clear who led that project. And in fact, I learned that councilmember Susan Rubio was trying to lobby to get that park named after her, in fact. So, that will tell you, you know, who was leading the effort. And so I think it's really important to highlight that this was a council will, and even though early on in my tenure as a councilmember, we were looking at revitalizing our downtown with, you know, housing and mixed use and retail, that direction changed in 2000, around 2013 or thereafter. And so, it was just a will of the council, the support was there, and then at one point, councilmember Ricardo Pacheco, as you pointed out, councilmember Avila, decided to work with the mayor and I to go back to the original vision, and that's where we stand today, and I do hope that, you know, these projects will generate revenues and housing for our city, because we absolutely need housing, and I think that you would agree about that.
Right, and I'm in agreement, it was, it was outlined on the who voted yes, who voted no, but I just wanted to clarify that at the beginning, everybody voted yes, and then after spending those $500,000, then the project was changed, and so those $500,000, it was done by the direction of the council, however, it could have been used elsewhere, had we, well, I wasn't part of it, but had it been discussed further to maybe move a park somewhere else, but being that it was discussed as a council, and it was approved, those $500,000, it proves that the money was not mismanaged, whether the project went through or not, because I did try to bring that project back myself, and April 13th of 2019, I had Sam bring it back, and it was then that I requested to look into grants to see how we can possibly fund that, that park, and since we already had everything in the process, and the money had already been spent. At the time, the mayor said, let's move this, let's move this to look into it, but then you and Councilmember Hernandez stated that you wanted housing there, and I understand right now, we're working with Rome to put affordable housing there. So I just wanted to clarify on the votes, that's all I wanted to do.
Well, first of all, thank you, Alejandra, very much for providing that archive votes, and at the same time, so, I do recall at the time that Councilmember Susan Rubio wasn't through the attic, like a lot of us were, because she thought we'd get the money, and eventually we found out that we couldn't get the funds, but nevertheless, we all moved on. Alright, well, thank you very much for that. So at this point, I'll ask Mr. Yatzi to move forward, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So, funding number two, they listed inadequate oversight for on-call service contracts. So this revolves mainly around a contract the city had with IE, infrastructure engineers, also known as AAE. So, they didn't quite agree with our contract, however, we had done two RFPs for these services within the last six years. Our contracts and RFP complied 100% with the municipal code. Requires that any contract over $24,999 go to the city council. So we did that, the council approved the project. In our opinion, the council put even stricter controls in place, so that if any work order out of that contract exceeded $120,000, it would have to come back for city council review. There was also some concern over the increasing payments to the vendor, however, you know, their work is often dictated by the capital improvement budget, because they're doing design and oftentimes inspection for that work. And as you know, we've had a very aggressive capital improvement budget over the last few years, so that does increase the use of consultants. Also, we had them covering some vacancies during that time. They also had noted that the consultant was initiate, I don't wanna say initiating projects, that's probably not the right term, but was submitting proposals on projects. And again, that was under a different director, and that was at a time when our staffing levels were a little bit low, and there's really nothing wrong with that, but we changed that process when we were staffed up and ready to go. So, I did mention that Sam Gutierrez and Rose Tam are here if you have any questions. Just also wanted to mention that, you know, this is back a few years ago, both of them had just pretty recently taken over as directors, and they were really in the process of cleaning up the departments, getting policies put into place, you know, changing past practices that needed to be done. So, they have been working on that constantly and are continuing to do that. One item that was in the first contract with AAE was quarterly reports to the city council. Those had not been done consistently in the past, it's not required in the current contract, we think it's not a bad idea, and Public Works will start sending those out, those quarterly reports out to the city council in the future. Next slide.
Shannon?
Yes.
On that topic, can you just let us know the process of how we selected the on-call contractor?
So, the last, the last contract, we did an RFP. We solicited from anybody and all contractors who would bid on that services. They outlined their services and their fees. We actually ended up going with AAE, who had been the previous contractor, they did provide us the lowest fees, and we also had impact on the project, sort of, um, a baseline percentage. So, for example, a traffic signal, it would be, the cost was preset, so that if there's a traffic signal designed, the fee for that would be a certain percentage of the project. So all of those fees are locked in, there's really nothing else to negotiate. But, again, that process, staff went through that process, they reviewed all of the RFPs, city council, the city council approved the contract, which is exactly what the municipal code requires.
I have a question. Go ahead. Go ahead. Okay, thank you. I'll wrap it up here. So just to reiterate then, what you just said, the council did put out an RFP or RFQ for the on-call contractor, and the council from that process then chose AAE for their competitive rates. And so, that's what I'm hearing you say?
Correct.
And that that is in compliance with our city municipal code?
Correct.
And is that what most cities do?
Yes, however, I should mention, not, most cities don't have the other stricter control in place, the $120,000. Oftentimes, cities will let the on-call services, you know, up to the total contract amount, it could be $800,000, $1.2 million, and then it never goes back to city council. So I think we actually have stricter controls. There's some other cities, larger cities, will have maybe multiple on-call contractors on board. You know, we're a smaller city, and in some ways, it's good to have a single consultant, because you're working with them every day on projects. There's various ways to do it, but what we're doing is not unusual, and like I said, I believe it has stricter controls in place than some cities.
And those rates are locked in, you said, right? And that was through the RFP, RFQ process?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
So Shannon, a quick question. What was the amount before the 120?
I'm s-
Did you hear me?
Yeah, I'm not sure I understand the question.
So you said that we, the projects don't have to come to council unless they go over 120, is that what you said? Was there a smaller amount before?
So the initial contract went to council for approval, and then any, any other task that exceeds $120,000 has to come back to council a second time.
My question, had it always been 120, or was it a smaller amount before?
So, Sam, I'm not sure if you can help me, I believe both of the contracts had $120,000 in it, but it may have been changed at one time, I don't know, Sam, if you have that number? If you're there.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Hear me?
We hear you.
Yeah, hi. So yeah, I don't know previously what that number was, but you are correct, Shannon, the 120 limit was implemented as an addendum to the previous contract, before we RFPed for the second contract, the current contract, and in this current contract, we thought that the 120 limit was a good idea, a good amendment, so we carried it over to the new contract.
So, Sam, yeah, I think what you touched on is the original contract, I think 120 was added in the original contract, so it sounds like at one time, there was no amount in place to bring back items, so I think previously, you know, any project would have been under the original contract regardless.
So with no limit?
Right, they were, they were unlimited before, and then there was an amendment made to that existing contract, the prior contract, to cap them at $120,000, and they go to council for a second time. We thought that that was a good idea, so we carried that over into the new contract.
And why is it a good idea, Sam? Just to help you find that.
Yeah, so it just adds another layer of redundancy to the...
Down here.
Sorry, pardon me, I just got a phone call, I'm using my iPad, I'm so sorry. I'm sorry, sorry about that. I'm using my iPad, so phone calls are answered on my iPad, so I do apologize for that, I'm so sorry. Yeah, so, if, if a particular project, a high-dollar, high-limit project, usually carries the design costs, you know, for example, a two or three million dollar project, design services could be somewhere around $250,000, and we felt that bringing back for council approval a second time, design services over 120 would be just the second layer of sort of like oversight, and just kinda letting council know what we're doing.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Okay, if there's no other questions, I'll move on to...
That's fine, let's go on.
Shannon, actually, you know what? I was just thinking, you know, you mentioned the reports earlier, and the quarterly reports, and I'm... And I'm, I'm just so that, just to repeat, um, we went through an RFP process. We selected an on-call contractor. Those rates were locked in. And then for added measure, we implemented this hundred and twenty thousand dollar cap. So that should anything exceed a hundred and twenty thousand, it would come back to us. What I would suggest is perhaps yet another measure to say at, I don't know what number, we can all discuss it here, maybe five hundred thousand, seven hundred fifty thousand, just to include that in the report so that we can track how much is being, you know, it's just a, like the watchdog of like how much is being expended. So it's just an added measure and perhaps it would address any, you know, any concerns that the state controller's office had.
Yeah, I think, I think we can do that as part of the quarterly reports. That's definitely not a problem.
Hundred and twenty is a bit much before it comes to the city council, but that's something I would like to discuss with the council members at a later time.
Okay. Uh, if there's nothing else, we'll move on to three. Um, so number three, um, the review was failure to use a competitive procurement process for some service contracts. Recommendation was to comply with the municipal code pertaining to competitive procurement. Uh, then number two, adopt a strict policy pertaining to sole source vendors to ensure the requirements to use a competitive procurement process are not circumvented. So our city code is a little unique and it's actually kind of somewhat vague and outdated um in regards to professional services. We definitely agree that a competitive process is good, um, and we should be doing that uh almost all the time. Most cities, our, our city code actually says that it shall be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder, which is actually very unusual in city services, and we're only talking about professional services. We're not talking about buying a vehicle or doing a construction project. These are professional services, consulting services, um attorney services, engineering service, economic development services. Um, and the reason that, that most cities, um, although they look at the fee, it's not based merely on the lowest fee. And the reason for that is because professional services, you're often looking for um particularly, particular qualities, experience of the vendor, um, maybe they are very experienced in this type of work. So those factors can also outweigh the fees. You know, the fees are good to look at to make sure that we're competitive, but I think you have to weigh all of those things. So the next slide, um, they did touch on legal services. And the wording, the, the code again is very vague and it says, you know, when directed by the council, staff should do an RFP. But there's a lot of times, one, that city council doesn't direct us to obtain services. And there's also times when, for example, in legal services, if we're, if we're issued a, uh, if, if the city sued, we oftentimes have only thirty days to respond. So that's why we have firms already on contract, the city councils approve their contracts, approve their fees, and they're ready to handle these cases as needed. So as far as the sole source, um, we've already put into place a strict policy pertaining to sole source. And what had happened? There was a couple, a, a couple few instances where a department had bought something and said, oh, it's a sole source. So that basically means no one else has it. So we just need to really question that and really um make sure that that's um the case. And it oftentimes is in software, because if you're buying a software module, you can only possibly, for example, buy a Microsoft software module. Um, it has to be compatible with your system. If you're building a sys, a raid, police radio system out of Motorola radios, then you're gonna have to buy the Motorola own Motorola component. So we.
Let me ask a question, uh, let me ask a question, but when you say we, we accept the laws, been, always been a is it because we're a charter city or, or what, what's the two terms between the charter city and what's the other? Term that's, that's, that's referred to how the, how the municipality governs itself?
Yeah.
General law city.
General, we're general law versus what's the other, is it charter? Is that the one?
That's a charter city. We are not a charter city.
Okay, so a charter city like Irwindale doesn't have to accept the laws. It could accept anyone, am I correct? Is there a charter city like Pasadena?
The charter cities go by their charter and it depends on how they set up their charter, Mayor.
Got it. Okay, just curious.
Yes, and that's, and that's true, um, and that's mostly true when you talk about construction projects, because the state has very strict for public works, construction projects, you must take the lowest bid, um, as long as they've met all the requirements. So the, the charter cities have some leeway in that. But again, when we're talking about professional services, almost every city has the leeway to not always take the absolute lowest fee, because you need to look at quality and experience. So basically, what we're gonna recommend is the follow-up and, you know, myself and finance department. What we'll do is research some of the other, other city municipal codes, some of the newer, more progressive codes. And we'll look at those and we'll come back with a proposed code amendment that is a little clearer and will be easier for staff to follow um and has um some more flexibility to it.
Shannon, this code, do you know?
I'm sorry.
The code that we have right now?
That second, uh, I don't know off the top of my head. I can look at, if I'm, code, it usually has the date, but it was adopted and I can get that for you shortly.
Yeah, definitely needs to revise.
Shannon, for the public, for the public information, what do general law cities like ours typically do when it comes to professional services?
So, so most cities um are very flexible according to competitive services and are not bound to the lowest fee. In fact, many of them have provisions for, for professional services under a certain amount that they either have a very informal process or even for some small amounts waive, waive the RFP process. Um, but for the most part, um, the general city um purchasing codes that, that I'm familiar with, um, are, are very lenient as far as professional services and allow you to um view all of the um qualities of the consultant, the, their past experience, um, uh, how they interviewed and their proposal, and allows you to weigh all of that with, with, with the fee and doesn't bind you to taking the lowest responsible bid.
Like maybe a specialty area, because for example, like city attorney services, not every attorney is going to specialize in the issue that might come up. So um it sounds like with what we have in place, we're able to, to choose an, us, like an attorney based on their specialty area and how it matches the issue that we're facing.
Correct.
Okay, so and it sounds like you're gonna be surveying some of the, the cities and then bringing to us, you know, what, what is the common practice? It sounds like we are doing the common practice, but, and then implementing it into the code, um, just to update that.
That's correct.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Thank you. Now, um, as others have already stated, um, you know, we fully, I fully support, you know, having the flexibility when it does come for professional services. You know, being in government and seeing the type of bids that have come in, uh, you know, being bound by the lowest bid, uh, doesn't necessarily provide the best services or uh goods for our city. Specifically, as you know, Councilmember Garcia had mentioned, um, for, you know, if it's such as law, you know, law services, you know, we do have to make sure that we have the, the right attorney or the right agency that will provide the best service uh for and on behalf of the city. So I'm certainly looking forward to uh seeing the, the updated uh ordinance in the coming weeks. Thank you.
Okay.
Go ahead, moving along.
Thank you. So uh, number four, um, they listed possible inflation of the city's official pension. The SCO quoted a state law that refers to employees. So this refers to um past police chief Michael Taylor, um, who left the city and retired. And then he came back um as a retired annuitant to work as an interim. And then at another point, he actually came out of retirement um to become a city employee again and negotiated a new, brand-new contract at that time. So we didn't think, and we still don't think that that law applies. And even at the time, um, our HR department and um Taylor himself, uh, we all called PERS, explained exactly what was happening. Um, PERS agreed that we were um on the right track. We followed all of their advice and guidance. So we believe we did everything correct, um, but we said we'll, we'll run this by PERS again and just make sure that um they have still back up their original um response.
And Shannon, is that a report that you're sending back to them? Uh, PERS had to say about it?
So we'll probably just send them the excerpt from the report, because it quotes the state law and we'll just let them know, um, we're sending this to them. It's been, uh, the state law's been brought to attention. They believe it applies. So, so the, the state law basically says, uh, if you have a group of employees, it's actually a little bit confusing. It's, it's, it says, if you have a group of employees or if you have an employee who's not in a, in a, a and they're going to take a raise, um, then you have to look at all of the other employees in their bargaining unit, which is strange, because it just said they're not in a bargaining unit. And you cannot give them basically a huge raise that the other, than that group did it right before they retired, because that would spike in their salary. In our case, Taylor wasn't an employee of, he was not an employee of the city. He was a retired and he came back and he created a brand um contract.
Which was a huge contract and I disagreed with, but that's the past.
Okay, and we'll, we'll send that.
Can, can I, Mr. Mayor, can I add something in there?
Go ahead, go ahead, legal counsel.
I, I think it's also important to remember when the council was gonna get, was gonna give that contract to former Chief Taylor, you knew that was only gonna be a year, that you were only gonna pay that for a year and then you were gonna go back down to uh different kinds of uh pay scales. And the reason why uh the council did that at the time was because we were in a very unique situation. And so they, they, they agreed to uh make that contract for a year. And in fact, that's what the council did do. After uh Chief Taylor, the co, the salary went way back down again. So um that was just a one-time thing that, that the council did for some very unique circumstances and knew that they would not be paying that amount, you know, from that point forward.
Okay, at this point, thank you very much for that. Uh, we'll go ahead and move forward.
Okay, so if we could go to number five. And I've, I've gotta make a comment here, because I've seen in some of the blogs and some of the online stuff that, you know, people are saying about number one and number five, you know, there's five hundred thousand dollars missing. Who stole the five hundred thousand dollars? Who stole the three point four million dollars? You know, I, I have to stop here and say, there was absolutely, under this report and this review, uh, there was no wrongdoing. There was no fraud. There was no corruption. There was no money missing. Um, there was no wrongdoing. A couple of these were accounting errors and, you know, this, this next one is an example, is basically an accounting error. Normally, projects are approved, um, either in the beginning of the year or in the capital budget, as you know. However, there's projects that have different timelines. And we had a three point four million dollar energy savings contract, which was on a different timeline. And it was because it was dependent on a loan from the state of California. Well, the state of California gave us the loan for the project. The project was done. What should have happened is there should have been an amendment to the budget and it's basically accounting, an accounting item saying, this money is now added into that year's budget. That wasn't done at the time. Um, it was caught at a later date and that procedure has already been um revised so that when projects are um approved mid-year or mid-cycle, that they get appropriated to the budget so that they show up as a budget line item. So this was basically an accounting item. Um, again, you know, no wrongdoing, um, no money missing. It was just an accounting item. And there's no further follow-up on that, because the procedure is already in place. Uh, number six, uh, number six was just in general, um, some policies and procedures um were outdated in the personnel and accounting um manuals. Um, most of those um have already been updated or in the process of being updated. And this is a continual, this is, this is, this happens continually. I think, um, you know, in the last six years I've been here, we've updated accounting uh policies, at least this is the third time. So we're constantly doing that. And obviously, it's good practice and it's something we will continue to do is to uh update policies and procedures and um give that information out to the employees to make sure they're following it.
Shannon?
Shannon.
Yes.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Um, I, I believe, you know, part of the item that they found was, you know, there was speaking to the uh, you know, the accounting and personnel manuals not being fully updated, you know, uh, historically back to nineteen eighty-four. The pop, the process in which staff is going to revise is, are we doing a full review of both documents?
Um, I can probably let Rose Tam answer this. Um, you know, right now, we've updated um very important policies. It takes a lot of time and energy to look at the entire manual and updated. It's something um that's normally done piece by Oh, Rose, if you have any other comments?
Hi, uh, Shannon. I agree with what you say. The whole entire accounting manual is a full book and at that time, compared to the new high technology, it's kind of outdated. And that's why finance has been continually updating the, a certain portion of the accounting menu on a, a needed basis. For example, we updated the accounts receivable, accounts payable, payroll, uh, policy procedure and the purchasing order or the credit card, because back then, in the eighties, hardly anybody used credit card, especially the city employees. And therefore, we update the credit card and travel policy and procedure. And as we mentioned, we have continually updated the policy and procedure on as needed basis or based on the addict's recommendation.
Yes, I understand that. Um, but could we also please just, you know, take the, take the time to, you know, review the entire, you know, uh, manuals, both of them? And see, you know, what items are, you know, again, outdated, uh, that should be replaced with new practices and policies? And more importantly, um, if you can bring those to city council, you know, when, when these have been updated, so as a whole, we can adopt them and then, you know, you'll have a new date of approval. And again, you know, these standards and policies are always, they're a living document. You know, they, they, uh, they need to be, you know, uh, moved forward, um, or, you know, removed, uh, depending on the circumstances. But at least at that point, uh, the council would have uh adopted them, um, you know, in getting rid of, you know, any old and outdated procedures that, you know, don't necessarily align with our current practices. So if we can, you know, certainly look at that practice instead of just updating them um uh from time to time, uh, then that way we'll have much thorough, um, and more comprehensive review of, of the documents. Thank you.
Yes.
Yes, we can do that. Okay, if there's no other questions, uh, number seven. So number seven, um, it was in regards to check handling. Uh, in the past, employees were allowed to pick up the checks when a vendor was coming in to get paid, or maybe there was a contractor working in the field and they were allowed to pick those up and, and deliver them. Um, that's no longer the best practice and that practice has al, has already been discontinued and a new policy uh and procedure put into place. Number eight, um, lack of itemized receipts for some city-issued credit card purchases. So there were a very few cases. Um, so there were a very few cases, um, where a detailed receipt were not attached. Um, that contains the breakdown of the service. Uh, sometimes when you make a purchase online, you're able to print out something that doesn't. Uh, you know, doesn't, it might tell you, uh, in general what was purchased, um, but does, doesn't give you quantities. Um, and that type of thing, or sometimes if you do a purchase with a credit card. You, you, you get two receipts and one is a credit card printout, but the other is a printout that says itemized list. Um, so there were some places where the wrong receipt was attached and it's. Um, again, uh, nothing improper was purchased, um, nothing improper done. It's just, uh, paper trail, um, and, um. I know most of you know that when, um. You use a credit card to go to a conference, that Rosa's very detailed in making sure that she has a breakdown of, of all of those. Um, so a good example is, you know, a hu- a hotel room. It might tell you the room rate, the taxes, um, other fees that are on there, so those, those are what we're, we're asking for. That policy's already been updated, um, procedures have been put into place and we're making sure that those itemized receipts are contained.
Shannon. I, I just wanna mention, I, I, I chuckle when you mentioned Rosa because, um, yes, I've, I've been. You know, on city business and have, I remember a three dollar receipt. A three dollar receipt to a parking structure, um, and it was a courthouse because of a, a, of a case. That, uh, you know, I was involved with unfortunately, uh, on, in my relation to the city. And Rosa was just on me about the three dollar parking, you know, receipt and I had to go through all of my receipts and, or, you know, go looking for it. So that's why I have a, I, I do have a hard time believing that, you know, um. The, you know, everybody else wasn't get kind of given the same, um, response or. Or practice or policy, so let's just make sure that everybody's on board with that, I know Rosa is. You know, on top of it and, and if she's holding us, you know, to it for a three dollar part or receipt. Then we need everybody to, to follow that lead and make sure that, you know, everything is accounted for and that nothing is falling through the cracks.
Correct, Rosa is very, very good at that, um, she handles that for administration. Uh, you know, the handful of these that came out with other departments, you know, for example. You know, one with purchase of police department supplies, well, it wasn't broken down to say. Um, you know, uh, X number of uniform shirts, you know, X number of, of handcuffs, or wha- whatever, so. But again, that's, that's, um, policy procedures been put into place, we're watching those very.
So Shannon, about how many of those receipts, uh, did they find that they were not itemized, that it caught their attention? I mean, if it was one or two, I can see probably them not noticing, but how many were caught without being itemized?
Uh. Let me see, I'd have to go back to the report, but I have it here, I can look that up real quick. Uh, and they, they went through quite a few receipts, so, uh, and, and I'm not saying it's only one or two. Um, but percentage-wise, it was a small percentage-wise.
So, I, I never use city credit cards, I don't even have one, but, so when you issue these credit cards to people. Uh, do, are they not aware that they need to bring itemized receipts? Are they not told that if you don't have an itemized receipt, you won't be reimbursed or I don't know how that works? Is it a city they're using or their own and they're getting reimbursed?
No, this would be a city credit card, um, and, and they, they are told and they know. Um, but it was just sometimes the review was a little. And, you know, it, what looked like a receipt with a detailed purchase was really just a receipt that had some information and that was attached. Um.
Again, it was obviously something noticeable, so we need to be very. Receipts to make sure they're item, if not, make the person accountable for paying for those receipts since they weren't responsible. To bring the itemized receipts, which they know they should be bringing. That's my.
Yes, and, and, uh, the policies and procedures that were just updated, that the council approved. Uh, a couple meetings ago, that include, um, sort of a tightening up of this policy. Clearly stating, um, and requiring the itemized receipts, I can get you that number, right, it might take me some time to find it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, uh, next item. Uh, number nine. Uh, this was a period, um, that they found, but there were some bank reconciliations that were done late, there were spy instances that were pointed out. Um, there's really no follow-up. Um, the city already had implemented new procedures and policies to make sure this doesn't happen. Uh, not to make excuses, but this was during a time when, um, there was a little bit of, uh, there was a vacancy in finance and we were implementing a new finance system. Um, you know, so staff were a little overwhelmed with that. Um, things got delayed a little bit, um, those, those were late, but again, um, that's cleared up and, uh, that's no longer happening. Uh, number ten, um, uh, they say lack of annual employee performance evaluations. Um, I guess they pulled out a number of evaluations and that said that two out of the ten, uh, were late or not yet completed. Um. Employee evaluations are always an ongoing, um. Um, issue that we need to keep up on and we agree those need to be done timely. Um, it's difficult for managers, you know, they may have, uh, ten evaluations to do and when they do. They get two or three done, another two or three are due, so sometimes they're constantly doing them. And we agree we need to keep up, um, we're having, uh. H R is gonna be sending out quarterly reports to their directors, indicating to them which evaluations are outstanding. Um, honestly, uh, this indicates we're, uh, batting eighty percent. Um, I mentioned this to a few other, um, city managers, they kinda laughed and they said we're probably doing pretty good compared to most cities at eighty, eighty percent. But we're gonna strive for a hundred percent and have those done, uh, and up to date at all times. Um, so eleven, lack of controls over purchasing approvals. Um, so when a department, uh, makes a purchase, they have to do a requisition. It has to go for supervisors', uh, approvals, has to go to finance, make sure that the money was budgeted. Um, so they found thirty-nine that had, um, either. Didn't have the proper approval or didn't have it on time and the approval had gotten done after the fact. Um, we have already put into place, um, enhanced, um, forms that need to be filled out on the requisitions to make sure. Um, that, um, that the proper signatures are obtained. Um, and a, um, procedure so that these things get processed, um, before items get purchased. And, and honestly, some of these things, um, you know, s- staff are really busy, staff have deadlines. They're trying to put on a program, they're buying supplies for a program. You know, and the paperwork's taking a little bit longer, but the event happens tomorrow, they, you know. A couple of these instances where they had to take delivery of the items, again, nothing improper was purchased, nothing was done, no- nothing was done. Um, you know, that was illegal, nothing was missing, it's just that we didn't follow the proper procedures in a few cases. Um, and again, uh, there's no further follow-up because that, uh, policy and procedure's already been put into place.
Uh, that's. There's our, I'm sorry, Shannon, I'm sorry?
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
So you said there is no further action because all these are now in place? The thirty-nine findings that they, that they found, you've already showed them that we have a, a new procedure in place?
Well, so what, what they basically did is they went. In the timeframe and went through, um, all of the number of purchases and they found some that might follow the proper. Um, for example, an item, item been, might have been purchased. But it wasn't signed a few days later because paperwork was sitting on the supervisor's desk to, to review and sign. Um, so they, uh. So, so in response, we revised the form. Um, and made them very clear what signatures are approve, are, are required for approval. I put that policy into place, they, they, you know, we mentioned what we're gonna do, they didn't really. Um, they don't come back and review our season, fee, procedure, they just recommend. Place.
Yeah, I don't understand how the purchases were made, I'm in charge of doing, making sure all of our purchases are approved. Before they even go to fiscal and then fiscal approves from there. So I, I'm not sure how we can skip so many items without approval and. And. So yes, that's my question on, on what the policies are, please. If you can send email to me.
Yeah, we can do that and, and the asked, um, I believe those, uh, policies and procedures are now in place so that things, you know. Items are following the right, um, proper protocol.
Shannon, I, I have a question, um, Councilmember Abila mentioned the thirty-nine findings. Can you speak to the thirty-nine findings?
Um, I'd have to pull out the report, it gives some, um. I can, I can get you, I can get you the examples of those, yeah.
Um.
But for example, one that I remember was, I think, um, a department was buying, um. Shirts for an event, a community event, it might have been the five K run or something like that and, you know, the event had to be done and the paperwork didn't get signed until after the fact.
Can you give me a high level of what the thirty-nine findings are that, um, you're referring to?
Well, yeah, that's, that's one example, um, where.
Okay, uh, well, I understood that there were eleven main findings, right? Eleven major findings within the, um, within the audit, is that correct?
Yes, and thi- this is number eleven.
Okay, and so the thirty-nine, what, what is, what is Councilmember Abila referring to exactly when she says thirty-nine findings? What, where those, I'm trying to understand where that, what that is.
Oh, uh, yeah, that, that, um, I think she's referring to that finding eleven, it claimed there were thirty-nine purchases. Thirty-nine purchases were made without the. Yeah, that would be.
Okay, okay, I, that's what I wanted to understand because I understood that the state controllers audit. Found, they had eleven findings. And what you're saying is that in item number eleven, there were thirty-nine purchases that they're calling into question.
Correct.
Okay. And you're saying that those purchases were, um, what, describe them to me, what, what characterized them for me?
So, for example, one was, um, you know, for example. That I gave some T-shirts that were needed for event, um, the event was the next day, they had to be purchased, but the paperwork didn't get signed until, you know, maybe the next Monday. Uh. That's one example and that, that, that's sort of in general what they are, I can, you know, I can get you the full list.
Okay, and so what are we doing, what are we doing to address the state controllers' concerns, I guess, around those items? Those purchases?
Well, well, so their concern is we put a policy in place for future purchases. Um, and, and that's what we've done, we've put a policy for all future purchases, it's already in place. Um, has proper paperwork that has, um, enhanced, um, description, enhanced instructions. Um, and then has some checks and balances when it goes through each department and the finance department, so that's what's been put into place.
And how, what was the, what was the cumulative total, the sum total of the thirty-nine purchases?
I, I can get that for you, I have it right, right here handy, I'm sorry, but I can get that.
I'm just saying, you know, for the public that's tuning in, it's just good for them to understand and for, you know, us to understand too.
Yeah, most of them were, were small, smaller purchases, you know, five or ten thousand dollars, I think there was one that was a little higher, but, um. Again, I don't, I don't wanna guess without ac- actually having to go back and look at the list.
Yeah, I don't want you to guess either, I don't mean to put you on the spot or anything, um, cause. Yeah, I, I would, would not want the wrong information to be communicated. So if it's available, great, and if not, um, you know, we can follow up at a later time.
Yeah, we'll send that.
Shannon, can you put that information on the website on how much the total was for those thirty-nine purchases? Because it doesn't specify, I don't believe.
Sure, do that.
Shannon, um, one other item, uh, you know, deadlines are gonna come, you know, in the future, you know, uh. These sensitive, you know, time purchases, um, you know, happen, you know, quite often, uh, in a normal, uh, business, especially. When we're running, uh, you know, special events and so forth, as you mentioned. Um, can you make sure that the, um. The control policy also has, uh, some information in regards to how to interact during emergencies? Um, I don't want us to necessarily be blinded, uh, you know, by our policy because, you know, we have an emergency. Um, and I just wanna make sure that that policy, uh, that type of language is in there. Um, and more importantly, you know, if we could also put in language where, you know, uh, the finance department does spot checks. Um, you know, throughout the years, uh, that's, you know, that will just make sure that, uh. You know, the, the key oversights and the checks and balances are, are being, you know, are occurring throughout the, throughout, throughout the year.
You can also have appeals with certain companies, so to have an emergency. You already have that available and of course you have to provide an itemized list of what you purchase, but it can be done on an emergency basis. And it's been pre-approved for a certain amount, I mean, don't make it a big amount, but just make sure that money's available for emergencies, emergency purchases.
So, Councilmember, I mean, are you speaking more towards like a pre-qualified list? Of items?
So, so you can have an appeal with the company, let's say, let's say, uh, we have. To build something at the Parks and Rec for, for an event, for a performance for the kids and something broke and. We don't have time to get this money approved, so you have a purchase order at Home Depot for, let's say, a two hundred dollar purchase order. Open, so you can just go with that appeal to Home Depot, purchase items, bring back your receipt. And then Home Depot gets paid once, uh, we get the receipt fiscal, our fiscal department will pay Home Depot the amount. To have an itemized receipt.
Thank you.
Okay, so that's the end of the, um, report tonight, um, any other questions or comments?
Yes, uh, Shannon, thank you very much for taking the time and, you know, sharing all this, uh, in detail and, you know, everyone's, uh, background on this. Um, the one thing I'll ask, you know, if, if my colleagues agree, is if, you know, if you can create, uh, just a, a, a matrix. Uh, in regards to, you know, items that are open, uh, items that are, that have been completed, uh, any items that have a delay. Uh, this type of matrix, you know, just basically make sure that, uh, all the items that the audits has identified, uh, as a council. Uh, we have, uh, reviewed and adopted, um, at our level and, you know, that, that, uh, matrix can be. Uh, just included in our consent calendar and as needed, we can pull it out, if that's okay with my colleagues.
Certainly, we can do that.
Alrighty, uh, let me also just say, the hospital that I work at, and this happens every organization. Uh, we go to, they're to, um, um, joint commission, um. Um, auditing, similar to what it is, uh, here. So we should be ready at all times and I know that we do have an auditor that comes, is it once a year, uh, am I correct on that? Are there once a year?
Correct.
We, we should also do one on our own, uh, to make sure that all the processes are, are, are in place. And, uh, and, and, and check them, uh, see if they're balancing out, see if they're all working hand in hand. Uh, that's no different than a school that gets edited by the WAS, uh, or, or, organization, I don't know, um, on what type of basis, but. Uh, to make sure that we, uh, erupt apart and everything. What I do like, that they also did conclude that there was no improprieties, uh, so there was. Nothing that, that would stand out that would say, well, the city of Baltimore Park, uh, has violated or there's, uh, money missing as it's circulating through social media, but of course. Everyone's entitled to their own, uh, personal theory and opinion and there's nothing we could do about that, so I want to first of all congratulate. Uh, all the staff that participated in the audit, but at the same time, I would request, Shannon, that we have our own internal. Set up some type, sometime within the year where, where you run, where we run our own, uh, audit it internally besides the actual finance, uh, just so that. So that we're up to par with what the state has mandated, and of course, you know, having the state audit us, it's, uh, that occurs, now if you wanna see a scaling. Um, minimum scaling audit, go online and look up the one for the city of Lingwood. Uh, incredible, um, that happened about two years ago, I believe, uh, so when I look at that. Uh, so, when I look at that, and look at Ballham Park and look at cities, I mean, we don't wanna be in that area. And I know that we're doing good, um, and these auditors are also designed to assist you so that you improve, uh, on your current processes, so it's important for us all to note that as well. Alrighty, thank you, anyone else have any other questions? Okay, if, at this point, we will go into closed session, so I guess we'll be, uh, logging out, logging back in.
Thank you, Mayor.